It's the October sixth, two thousand and twenty five school committee meeting. And I will call us to order and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And just to remind everybody tonight that our meeting is being recorded. And we are live on Zoom and on Westford Cast. And we will move on to our consent agenda. Based on a conversation, I think we're going to pull the fiscal crisis petition from the consent agenda for tonight. Dr. Chu is going to give us an update in his update later. And we can then decide if we want to vote on it at our next school committee meeting. Is that okay? Okay, so we're going to vote on the school committee meeting minutes dated two thousand and twenty five nine twenty two.
Motion.
Seconded. Beat me to it, Valerie.
You're beating me to it. All in favor? There we go, six zero. Okay. And next we'll move on to our public comments section of this evening. Just to remind everybody that our public comment section, we give our speakers two minutes to share their feedback questions. And at which point it's for informational for school committee. And just to remind you to give your name and address as you speak, so we have it for the records. And we will open up to the floor for anybody for public comments.
Do you have someone on Zoom?
You have someone on Zoom?
Yep. Uh, how do I do that? Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Promotes panelists. Yep.
We also have two people here.
Yeah. Yep.
Judy, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I think I just unmuted you.
We can, can you hear us?
Judy.
Yes, we can.
Okay, fine, because I have you down too low, I think.
Oh.
I feel barely. The reason, okay, my husband's going to figure out how to get it louder. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Now it's perfect, thank you. The reason I'm coming to the meeting tonight, I was there at the last meeting. I just wanted to request review what the next steps might be. Well, my request regarding a public, whatever you want to call it, a public recognition of Bill Olson's time in Westford School System. And I didn't know what the next step was going to be for you. If that's been decided yet.
Well, it has, it's something Judith, that we would have to follow up with on as a school committee. And it's not something we've discussed as of yet, so I can't give you an answer to that just yet.
Would you be able to know at approximate, is this something you look for for another year or another month or two? What kind of timeframe might you think this would fit into?
That's something Judith, I'll have to follow up with you on. As another point, I'm not in a position to kind of give you that timeline because it's not something the committee has discussed. So I can follow up with that for you.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you.
No problem, thanks Judith.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else for public comment? Yep, yep, no, yeah, come on up. Welcome.
Hi, thank you.
So, yeah, if you can just give your names and your addresses, that would be great.
Okay, I'm Kristen Stamp and I live at Four Patriot Lane. And I have something that I'm just going to read, so thank you so much for taking the time to listen. I just wanted to share a quick perspective as a parent about the new start time and bus schedule this year. Since the change, my sons have been spending a lot more time on the bus, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. What worries me most is the afternoon, after being in school all day. My son now spends about an hour on the bus to get home, even though we live just over a mile away, which is about a four minute drive from Abbott. I do pay three hundred and fifty dollars for the bus. And if I left for Hampton Beach when school gets out, I'd actually get there before he gets home. He started walking last week because it's only a twenty minute walk. But there are no sidewalks on Graniteville Road and it's not always safe and feasible, especially once the weather changes. I know the time change was meant to help kids' wellbeing, but for some kids, including mine, it's actually made things a little harder. They have less time after school to be outside or just relax. I know transportation is complicated, but if there's any way to shorten these routes, it would make a huge difference. Thank you for listening and for all the work that you guys do, appreciate it.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Little, I'm at Ten Patriot Lane. Thank you, Dr. Chu and school committee members, for your willingness to review the newly shared bus routes for this school year and the impact the change is having on our students and families. I'd like to provide some feedback based on my children's bus experience as well this year, and also propose ideas for mitigating the impact that these lengthy bus rides are having. Despite the Abbott School being one point two miles from my house, my third grader is on the bus for over fifty five minutes every afternoon. To put this in perspective, I could actually drive to Kidderi, Maine, in the time it takes my nine year old to ride around Westford with the current shared bus route that also collects kids from the NAB school. My primary request is that the bus routes get reconfigured so that all ride times get reduced to under thirty minutes for every student on every bus, as this was the benchmark most families could count on before this school year and before certain sister schools were asked to start sharing routes. However, if this thirty minute ride time cap cannot be achieved, then my second request is to waive the three hundred and fifty dollar bus fee for any family who has an elementary student riding the bus for over thirty minutes in a single trip. This is a reasonable request since there are kids living more than two miles away from their elementary schools who don't have to pay for bussing, yet are having shorter ride times than their peers who are paying the three fifty and living within the two mile radius. Perhaps it is time for Westford to rethink how bus fees get applied and waived so that both distance and ride time are considered and equity is better achieved. Thank you for listening, I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And anybody else online? Nope. Okay, so with that, we will move on to our informational updates. And we'll check in with our student representative first.
I think now that it's like partway, halfway through the quarter, everyone's gotten used to the new schedules, which definitely took a while, but I think people know kind of what time they're getting where now.
Okay.
Especially with the new freshmen, they've now been introduced into student government, so all those positions are filled. And I think things are going along. The student council already has their dance planned for the fall. And student senate at least has got our subcommittees formed and gotten to know the new freshmen and everything. So overall, I think people are getting into the new school year.
Thanks, Kristen. And our superintendent.
Two quick updates. Last meeting that we had, it was shared that MCAS would be available to parents and to caregivers via a portal. But there's been a little bit of a glitch on the Department of Elementary and Secondary's part, shocker, right? And it's just.
Not to pass the buck, but yes, it needs to be clear that it was not our.
Just out of an abundance of caution for student privacy, they are pushing that launch date back a little bit. So parents and caregivers should expect the traditional mailing that we've had for the, since MCAS has been shared. And we are anticipating that those results will land probably late next week in each of the mailboxes in Westford. Additionally, we will have our community coffee with the superintendent on Friday at ten o'clock. That community coffee will be held here in the Millennium Building in room thirteen and is open to any of the community members that would like to join us.
And Courtney wanted to talk about that because she was jealous that we were having it, so she hopefully will be able to join us this time, right? She's hopefully going to be there. The, I received information as to when Darba is taking place this year. So I told Ms. Kumar that we would kind of share that information too. So the Westford Academy South Asian Student Association will be celebrating Darba on Friday, October seventeenth, which is before our next meeting, so I wanted to make sure that we talked about it here. It's the fourth annual event. It's been very popular, taking place from six to ten. You can get tickets by looking at the, I think the information will be on the website and things like that for people if they're interested in attending. But it's a great family event that's been very successful. Next week, I'm going to be participating NEASC, which is the New England Association of, New England Association of Schools and Colleges. But it's the accrediting.
Body.
Company that, their association that we receive our accreditation from, which they do a review of high schools every ten years. They have a mid-year review that takes place in the middle of it. One of the things that they do is they ask for cooperating districts to provide individuals to go and do site visits in other districts. So when we, when Westford has a committee come to Westford Academy to do the site visits, it will be made up of other educators from around the state and potentially from around New England, but typically from around the state. And so one of the things that's taking place is they've asked me to participate in one in Bauxford. So I'm going to be going and participating in one of the collaborative site visits for two days next week to go to Bauxford, the high school that's in Bauxford, Nike.
Ascenomet.
Thank you very much, Mr. McDonald. Could you say it one more time a little?
Ascenomet.
Thank you, go.
Old rival, that's all.
That's where I'll be, I'm sorry. Well, a rival for you in a different way. So if I wear Westford gear, that won't be a problem. But so I'll be participating in that, in that visit, which is one of the things that we, I thought I would share that because the other thing that came up recently was that when we had a lot of our reductions based on our budget concerns, Westford Academy was in the middle of one of these reviews. I can't remember exactly which one it was, but they needed to provide their update and for their part of the ten year review. And when they saw that we had so many reductions, the NEASC decided to hold on voting on our review. And so one of the things that they were looking at was whether or not we still had library services and different things at the academy. And so we don't, they have yet to take that vote because they were supposed to do it in the summer. And I think they kicked it to their next meeting, which wouldn't be, I believe it was in December sometime, but I can kind of follow up on that. But I thought it'd be interesting to kind of share both of those pieces with you, the little bit of that update as to, we're still waiting for them to have that review. They haven't asked for more information from Principal Toomey, but at the time, I think all of the information that he's sharing, they'll see that we are still meeting all of the expectations that are in play for accreditation. It was just when anybody sees that sort of significant reduction in staff, it gives people pause. And so they want to make sure that we're still meeting the standard. So, so those are the two things I'm putting together in a NEASC umbrella in this update. Then the last thing I just want to talk about is what we pulled out of the consent agenda, which is the fiscal crisis sign-on letter that was, did you all receive that from MAS C as well too? You did not?
Not yet, no.
Okay, because MAS C, which for people listening is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and MAS S, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, along with the MTA, which is the Massachusetts Teachers Association, have collaborated on this letter. And what they're asking for is for people who would be willing to sign on to this petition, to send it to the governor and to the state legislature to ask them to consider these priorities as they develop the FY twenty seven state budget. And so the specific things they're asking to be reconsidered is strengthening of special education circuit breaker, fixing the chapter seventy inflation cap, fully reimbursing regional and non-regional school districts for school, for student transportation costs, significantly increasing rural school aid, and further mitigating the financial impact of charter schools on traditional public schools, and making targeted investments in the staffing and programs needed to best support student mental health. Now, all of those things sound to me like things that we are aligned with. So I am planning as an individual to log on and to sign my name of support to this letter. We were bringing it to you if you wanted to vote as a committee to decide whether or not to have the chair sign on your behalf, or you could all sign as individuals as well too. So it's not something that requires a school committee vote unless you wanted to make a public statement about that. But the letter is really just encouraging the governor to reconsider these priorities as they are, as she and the legislators are developing the FY twenty seven budget.
Thank you.
And moving on to school committee updates, anybody want to share?
From what I understand, the WA marching band held their second annual home show with success and placed first. So I was assuming the logistics went well. I was unfortunately not be able to be there this year.
Thanks, Tom.
I have a couple.
Yep.
The Robinson School Building Committee has been busy. We, I think I gave the last update that we ranked ten proposals. This is the step to hire the owner's project manager, which is the kind of intermediary firm that helps organize the architects and the designer pieces of it and protects the town and they're experts. So we're really looking forward to getting them on board. They, we, there was an OPM evaluation subcommittee that ranked ten proposals, interviewed three of the shortlisted candidates in like an all-day marathon session in this room. And we have put all that together with, we're currently negotiating with that firm and submitting it to the MSBA tomorrow. In line for them, the MSBA board takes, not a vote, but they sort of approve moving forward with the firm. And that will be November third. So at that point, then it should all start rolling along a little faster.
You hope.
Also, from a finance subcommittee, we met after the last meeting to discuss, if you remember in June, Jenny brought us a memo with all the student activity accounts from all of our, all nine schools. And we were noticing some inconsistency between which, which schools have which accounts and how they were kind of being handled. So we're, we took that action from the June business meeting to dive into it a little bit more as a subcommittee. We've had that first pass of the K to five accounts and made some recommendations. We're meeting again on Friday to dive into the middle and the high school accounts. And we're also going to start looking at club activity advisor stipends and that extracurricular revolving fund as we prepare for this year's non-general fund guidebook review for the FY twenty seven budget. Last thing is the Town DEI Committee is putting on the Indigenous Peoples' Day observance. It's the second annual, it'll be Saturday, October eighteenth at eleven AM on the Town Common. And then in the museum, there's a speaker, there's some traditional music. Usually a very meaningful way to mark the day, so I encourage anyone that can visit. Last one is Special Town Meeting is Monday, October twenty seventh, seven PM at WA. Childcare registration is, closes before our next meeting, so want to get that plug out there. Childcare registration is open until the twentieth. There's also an RSVP survey floating around social media and the town website because I think they're planning for sixteen hundred clickers in the gym and the PAC. So filling out that survey helps let them know how to plan appropriately.
And I believe it's been quite successful, they've said so far, it's helped them kind of.
Gauge.
Gauge numbers pretty well. And just to note on that as well, if you need accommodations in order to access Special Town Meeting, you can also reach out to Town Hall to request any assistance you might need regarding mobility, hearing, visual, et cetera. Policy met this week, I won't give an update because we're on the agenda, so we'll chat about that. But there is one thing just to bring to our attention that I wanted to check in with the committee on. Our stack committee typically has five members and by our state law, we have to have five members. In our school policy, we have dictated that we would have one from each grade level and two seniors to make up the five members of our stack committee. So apparently we're not cool enough for the freshman class because nobody ran from the freshman class to be on our stack committee this year. So we have two options before us. And I just wanted to kind of say, make you aware of it and that you can kind of follow up with me. One of it, one of them is that we can go back and look at appointing a freshman for the year so that we're in line with our policy. The other side of it could be that we would essentially suspend our policy for one year. There is another student who did run in one of the older grades who wasn't successful that we could potentially invite to join the stack for this year to fill that seat. So I'm just throwing that out there for you guys to have a think, ask any questions. And maybe over the next week, we can try and get some direction on what you think you might, as a, what we as a school committee should do in this, in this instance.
So that will be an agenda item next meeting to discuss and.
Yep. I just wanted to put it out there.
Do we have a timeline for meetings with stack?
It's every other month, so, yeah. Legally, we have to meet every other month.
Okay.
So we can get a date on for the end of October. Typically, we were meeting them right before our.
Yep.
Our meetings here.
Six o'clock window.
Yeah, on Monday nights.
Six, okay. Seven, okay.
That, that could actually be something that you might want to consider updating in the policy.
Yeah.
Because I could see that periodically happening.
Yeah.
At different grade levels.
At different grade levels, yeah.
So then it's like, do you then have a default to have so many, for the number of participants? If, if a representative from each grade is not available.
Yeah. And I can understand that freshmen are new, they, freshmen in particular, I suppose they're new to the school. They're still trying to figure out how things are working, so.
Trying to find their way to classes.
So still during the headlights.
Yeah, so, but that, yeah, that's definitely an option as well, but right now we'll move to figure out how to fill that fifth role.
Okay, so moving on, the school start time update with Dr. Chu.
Right, so I appreciate everybody's attention and the different feedback that we've received from families, from when we've been looking at the data, trying to collect all the data as to when the buses are showing up. We've tried to triangulate it as best between what the bus drivers are reporting, what the principals are seeing, what D Bus is telling us, and again, like, I think examples of what families are telling us that they're seeing as well too, to look and see what is happening here. The overall goal as far as the transportation is, is to reduce the amount of time that the students are on the buses as best as we can. While, while we're looking at the data over the last couple of weeks, the recommendations that I have, when we look at the six through twelve transportation specifically, the hours seem to still be making sense, that seems to be working effectively. We want to continue to monitor the times in which students are being picked up in the morning. I think that right now, I'm bringing to you a recommendation that we push the AM pickup times back even more for the two middle schools because I think the middle school buses, based on the data that we're seeing, is that they're still getting to the middle schools earlier than they need to. I say we continue to look at it at WA because if the buses start showing up later at WA, I'm a little concerned about the traffic pattern.
Yeah.
So WA has been dealing with the buses as they're arriving so that they can move traffic with that limited amount of options that they have for traffic. So, but we could keep looking at it because that could be something that we could say, maybe those start times could, could start a little bit later. Now, that's not something that you need to do, right? That's something that's us working with Dee, that's us telling us and communicating to families that we're going to start the pickup times a little bit later, but that doesn't require action on your part specifically. Of course, if you have feedback or thoughts about it, happy to listen. When we look at the K to five bus routes and the timings, when we looked at it, it was nearly half of the Abbott and Christopher Lee buses were showing up after three o'clock because they were being delayed by needing to finish the six through twelve routes. So the buses are trying to finish those routes, drop kids off, and then by the time they're able to get to those schools, they're not there for the time the dismissal is happening. Day School was also reporting a similar situation and they were already working with D Bus to address, to address the morning pickup times because since Dee and, since Dee, since Day and Miller aren't combined, they were operating, you know, slightly, a little bit differently than the other schools because they were still able to just work within their own population of students. So the principal had already been communicating to Dee that the buses were showing up earlier at Day than they really needed to be, so they were already looking at adjusting those times. But when we put all of those things together for the three to five schools, it looks to me that I believe that we could adjust all of our three to five schools to change the time to eight fifty-five to three instead of the current eight fifty to two fifty-five. Now, that would be something that you would need to take action on because you've already voted all of the school times in the first place. So if we make any adjustments to the actual start in times, it would require a vote of the school committee. Now, that being said, the other issues that we're looking at when we're seeing all of the data is that we're seeing still the significant amount of time that students are sitting and waiting at the schools at dismissal time before the K to two schools are ready to dismiss. Specifically, when we look at NAB, there's not as big a, a change at Robinson, but there still was one. So if we shift even Christopher Lee, along with Day and Abbott to that new time, that's going to decrease the, the time between all of those schools. So that being said, the second recommendation is to adjust NAB, NASIT and the Miller School to nine oh five to three ten instead of their current nine ten to three fifteen. All right, now Robinson, remember, is already at a different time. So we're not talking about changing that time at all. Robinson would stay as it is. Christopher Lee, we'd move to, in all of these scenarios, what we're doing is we're shortening the time between those two schools. When we put this plan together, we thought we needed a certain amount of time in order to make sure that that transportation was possible. Now we're seeing that that amount of time increases the amount of time that all of these routes take.
Well, we were budgeting twenty minutes. And it looks like they're doing it in four, four to five minutes max, yeah.
And the bigger, the other thing is we had looked at Day and Miller and we wanted to give them twenty minutes between those two schools because of the distance. But we're now saying that we really need to shorten that time too. Because Miller is still now, just because of the timing, is now living at this end of, of, of the window. And by the time students are getting off the bus at the end of the day, it's just, it's really later in the day. And so just even moving them five minutes is also going to be helpful there. Now, if we take all that into consideration, when we look at the overall schedule, my favorite weekend of the year is daylight savings when we fall back. And that happens after Halloween and before November third. People are going to be adjusting time anyway. We could be communicating, that gives us a couple of weeks, that would give you time to consider all of this and to have a vote next meeting and still give us time to, to communicate if we were then to make these changes. My recommendation would be for November third, on that Monday. That would give us time, I think it's important with any of these changes that we give ample communication. And we could include, that would be included with principals notifying folks. I could send out a robo-call to, to let people know as it was approaching. But to me, at least the idea that time is shifting over that weekend, plus it gives you time, it's not pressuring you to make a decision tonight. It gives you time to think about it over, that's the, sort of the rationale that went into that whole recommendation. And with that, I don't know if you have any specific questions.
So I have two. So I was, yeah, struggling with understanding, like.
All the data.
Figuring out the, the time, like how the shift would be. So I think it would be good to try to have a better, and it'll take me to, take some time to understand how that will impact that ride time, for one thing. Second is. Second is that we do still need to keep in mind, um, car riders in this too. The, the time to get cars from one school to the other. Uh, and that may just be the schools themselves being willing to essentially have the kids at the sister school a little bit longer, waiting for parents to get from one to the other. But I will also note in your, your memo here that you're, uh, you have a note whether or not to separate those bus routes still. So that is something that is still a possibility, but we're not, we don't have that data at this time, so.
Uh, Dr. Chu, what, your discussion with the principals about these time shifts, what was, can you just speak briefly about that? You know, what the principals felt about this and?
Yeah, I would say, um, initially, everybody agreed that the shifts need to take place.
Yeah.
The conversations went back and forth as to whether it should be five minutes or ten minutes, right? In terms of how, how, as we're, as we're making that time shorter. When we actually look at the data, I think most everybody felt that we could make the shift that I'm recommending right now. Some people felt like, do we wanna not make all of those shifts because we are also gonna see some winter weather?
Yep.
You know, at some point, and that could impact things. My feeling is that this would, this would really shorten the expectation in which students are sitting on the bus. And knowing that the schools are already responsive to changes that can happen on any day.
Yep.
Any, any bus can be delayed any day for any reason. And the schools are already prepared for that, that's something that just already happens. By making this, this shift, it wouldn't create a scenario where we were constantly, that we were the cause of that.
Yep.
Because when we look at the data, again, originally, I thought we were just gonna move the K to two schools forward. But the fact of the matter is, is that those, those buses are not getting to the three to five schools by dismissal from the six through twelve routes. So to me, that makes sense to move them. So that would be the first thing I would suggest we do. If you're uncomfortable about moving the K to two schools forward, that is something we could delay if we wanted to. I do believe that it's something, when we look at the data and we look at where the buses are, are arriving consistently in those time slots. It makes sense that they would be able to meet that. And there would still be a natural staggering that's taking place, but it would be much closer, whereas we now have people who are just waiting for a bus to show up.
You can go, I can go after you. Um, under Abbott and NAB, at the first pickup, a lot of that is highlighted in yellow. And I know you spoke about like the six to twelve pushing their pickup time, like that they can start their pickup, their routes five to ten minutes later, maybe. Um, is that also the recommendation for some of these yellow pickups?
Yes. Well, that's why, the idea being is that they're already, we think that we could make those adjustments because they're showing up already too early for school.
Yeah.
Yes, right, okay.
Yes, and so.
With the shift and then?
It would just impact that even more. Cause right now, we're basically saying that if you don't make any, if, I'll go back to what I said earlier about the, the middle schools. If the school committee doesn't want to make any change in the school start times, then we're gonna s- change the pickup times anyway. Because that's something that we're saying that they're showing up, but well, they're showing up too early to drop the students off.
And, and would that wait until November third? Or that's something you'll communicate with Dee now?
I would do everything, if we're, if we think that we're gonna change the school start times, then I would do everything on one date and I would do it on November third. If for some reason the school committee didn't think that, that if, if I got a sense on October twenty-second that, or even tonight, that the school committee was not interested in changing the school start times, then we could start that earlier. But I wouldn't want it to be, I think families kinda need a, they need a clear communication as to when things are gonna change.
I, I think I agree with you for the most part, but I, I also think there's a value in having it like inch, right? Because this is about the time of year in, in a vacuum where you start to like know, like, okay, the bus is coming at this time. And if it, I think I just made the case for the opposite, actually. But I guess I'm just saying, I think, I, like, if there's something we can do that can help in the meantime, I wouldn't necessarily wanna wait on that.
I agree with you. My problem is, is that with all of the communication that we gave.
Yeah.
We still had just a handful, but we still had a handful of people who showed up at school at the wrong time at the beginning of the year because they didn't know that we were changing the school start times. And so if we're to cha- like, to me, that's why I'm like, I would much rather.
I just kinda feel like five minutes is like in the noise. Like it's like bad.
I, I mean.
Need like four weeks to communicate it.
To go from like pickup at seven ten to now being picked up at seven fifteen.
No, not even the bus, right, cause the.
Yeah, cause that change is only, they're not leaving Blanchard or Stony any earlier. They're just gonna hopefully get there five minutes later. So it doesn't have any downward impact to the elementary schools. It just means that your kid gets on the bus five minutes later.
Yeah, they're going a, they're.
Yeah, it doesn't downward stream to the elementary schools because they're still not leaving Stony or Blanchard until that seven fifty.
Yeah.
In the afternoon.
Or the morning, seven fifty.
In the morning.
No, in the morning, they, it looks like they have time.
That's where we're cutting the time down.
No, we'd, we'd be extending that time, right? If they're dropping off at a six to twelve for eight AM start time and many of these buses are picking up at like eight fifteen, we're gonna be extending that. So they're not starting their first pickup until eight thirty, eight fifteen, eight twenty-five.
No, we're talking about the middle school route pickup, not the.
I thought she said when you drop off at the middle school at eight eight, seven fifty.
Right now, they're picking up seven thirty, they're getting to the, to the middle school seven forty-five and then they're sitting there for five minutes. What he is saying is you might bump that to seven thirty-five and then they're not sitting at the middle school at all, they're just loading the kids off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's not downward impacting past the middle school in any way.
Yeah.
Because they're still not gonna leave the middle school until seven fifty.
I guess I'm saying, I think there's buffer in what that driver does next. Because that driver has no kids at seven fifty, is pulling out of the Blanchard or the Stony Brook or the WA parking lot and is starting their elementary route at like eight fifteen, eight sixteen.
Yeah.
And if we even scooched that elementary pickup, we're creating more time.
Oh, another five minutes, yeah.
So I'm not, I, I guess, I hear you, I think we agree each other, we're saying it in ways, is that I don't think changing the middle school in the morning, cause we've always said like the morning has more of that, it's the afternoon that we're always crunched by. The morning, those drivers have sort of ten minutes before they're starting their elementary run.
So that's why you feel because it's in a silo, we should just do the change now?
I mean, I'm, I'm ready for the change because I live it. And I, I see my, I see my kid get picked up and drive six minutes away.
You'll take an extra five minutes.
And then I see all the buses come back, drive past me to go to NAB and it feels really early. So I, I like can lay my eyes on the extra time. And I think families are ready, but I also don't wanna underestimate communication because.
Right, and we don't know about people's schedules in the morning, parent's schedules for work and so forth, that even if it's a few minutes, may be impacted and may need to make an adjustment.
What's the percent of kids that take the bus versus come to school in an alternate? Do we know, like roughly? Is it fifty percent of the kids take the bus versus fifty percent that either in early?
For all schools or just middle schools? You're asking on a night where we have enrollment information and.
In the bus data.
We literally have all of that data in front of us, but no one has ever asked that specific question.
Wants to do the math.
That combination.
So I'm like, wait, let me look at that, cause that's a really good question.
I was just cur- I was just curious too, cause it gives you an idea of where the impact lies more, right?
Well, we have.
And to Tom's point about moving the times too close, the parent pickups and drivers, like what?
I feel like what we're really talking about is impacting families leave, going to the bus stop.
For the middle school.
Later. Across the board a little bit, sorry, yeah.
Across the board a little bit.
But K to five by probably more than a little bit. Like if you're, if we're saying K to five, I'm, and I'm just focused on Abbott, but like, i- if we're saying K to five, sorry, we're saying Abbott and NAB pickup is early and we think we can scooch that later even without an official time change.
Yeah.
And then we're saying we're gonna shift Abbott five minutes later. Realistic, like in, in practice, that family, AKA me, is going out to the bus stop like a full twenty minutes later, probably in November.
Or ten minutes, yeah, ten, ten minutes later.
Or, yeah, fifteen.
The, the overall percentage, if we take the number of K to twelve folks who have bus passes in our population, it's like seventy percent.
Are buses.
Are on the bus.
Yeah, is that what I said?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Wow, okay.
But, but if we break it down.
Yeah.
Like, the higher percentage is definitely in the elementary schools too, so like.
Yeah, so, but I think that gives some good perspective to some of these conversations, right? Is, are we more worried about how long the kids are on the bus versus a smaller subset of parents that are, are trying to get from one school to the other? And to Tom's point, will the upper elementary hold the kids, you know, an extra two or three minutes while mom or dad or caregiver is going from point A to point B? If we're talking about seventy percent of our riders being on the bus, then clearly that is a bigger impact that we wanna talk about.
And, and one of the things that I've heard said in all these conversations is just a reminder of getting in line. You're then in line for, at the same time, if you get in line for the first school, you're in, in essence, getting in line for the second school as well too, right? So we have some people who are incredibly early all the time and we have some people who are screaming in just at the last minute. And so that aspect, I don't think makes a difference.
Right.
As to the space that exists between the two schools.
Yep.
Well, if you look at what the bus is doing it in, I mean, that we've got timed data from the bus.
And the bus, yeah, the, we know that the, that's, that's kinda my point.
Yeah.
The bus has basically told us, how long does it take to get from one school to the other? Cause that's consistent every single day.
Yeah.
And so then if, if we're kinda putting that into play and we move everything.
We're essentially saying drop off at Abbott would start at eight forty-five, which is ten minutes before the eight fifty-five start time.
And I, it's important, again, as we have this conversation, that you say would start at eight forty-five. Because that's one of the things that I've learned.
Yes.
Just even in this conversation is that there was a different expectation. Whereas there were times when the bus company thought that they had to drop the students off by that time. And we're like, no, 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 no.
We never gave them that direction ever.
And so that's another big piece of this shift is sort of the overall culture shift where forever, that was the expectation is that they were dropping them off so that they had those, that ten minutes in school before classes start, but that's not what that's all about.
Yeah.
Yeah, it feels like ten minutes is a lot at elementary, cause they're just walking into their classrooms. It's not like the middle schools or high schools where they're stopping at a locker, they're putting their stuff down, they're, you know, that's a lot of time to just be.
One minute is a lot, no, no.
Lollygagging.
So yeah, so potentially, we're saying that they could drop from eight forty-five.
Beginning at?
Beginning and that, um, then drop off at, eh, say now, I'm, I'm using Abbott and NAB because I kinda feel that's the, the bigger outlier. Is then nine oh five. So you potentially still, and, sorry, forgive me, from eight fifty-five that you could drop off, sorry.
No, that's true. Yes.
They're allowed off the buses at eight fifty-five?
Yeah.
Just to make, make that clear.
Yeah.
There's definitely some wiggle room at what time they're arriving at Abbott and when they're letting them off the bus. Not for all the routes, but definitely for some.
Yeah.
Wait, you just said eight fifty.
Who's, how do they clock these times? Like, are they, is it that the bus driver is like, has a clipboard and is like, I pulled in at eight thirty-seven?
I.
Or are they using some sort of like GPS or odd, like I was curious how the data?
No one's using GPS, no one's using GPS unfortunately, um.
Like, is there some variation of like human error where the bus driver is like, oh, I didn't log it?
I think there's, I think there's some, I think there's, there's also some where there's just like cut and paste, we all left at this time, right? When we're looking at the data, as you're looking through it, it's a collection of different individuals collecting that. So when sometimes the schools are looking at it and they're looking and checking the clock, the school clock at the moment in time that they're seeing the bus. The bus driver has their own perception as to what it says when they're pulling into the driveway. And then there have been times when some of the principals have gone back and looked at video to see when were people coming in. So there is variability, right? Because all of those clocks might not necessarily be the exact same.
Do we also know how much some of this is being impacted by inconsistency in the bus drivers? Now, it might just be my own experience, but my middle schooler has had a different bus driver on almost any given day on any route. And so like even just in our morning pickups, it can fluctuate seven or eight minutes. And it's oftentimes because a new driver. And then this afternoon, the bus didn't even show up at the school because it's a new driver who thought they were supposed to be at a different route, was at a different route. So I don't know if it's just my experience in a vacuum or whether, do we have any information from Dee or like, are they still shorthanded on bus drivers? Or do they have drivers that are consi- cause if, part of what makes the bus routes quicker is when the drivers start to realize, I'm stopping at that blue house and I'm stopping at the red house, I'm stopping at the, and they know the route and they know where they're going and they're prepared for all their stops, right? And sometimes that starts to knock a few minutes off. But if you're putting a new driver on the routes consistently, then there, it continues to be a like relearning the system over and over and over again.
Which I'm going to say is one of my arguments for shortening this time. Cause it's the amount of time that exists between the schools that is adding to the bus rides more than anything else. And so, well, I'm sorry, the idea of, is there consistency? I think we're hearing that there isn't necessarily consistency. So that will help shrink time, shr- shrink the routes over time. But I don't necessarily want to rely on that consistency, cause I don't know if that, when that's gonna take place. I feel like what we've put in place is the school start times, we gave a specific window that allowed us to have certain room for the transportation to exist between the two buildings. And now I think we need to shorten that, which is gonna impact the overall experience. It might not be the end of that experience, cause we, I think we can even shorten it more by what you're talking about with the consistency.
Yeah, I think just all the things chunk away, two minutes here, three minutes here, three minutes there, right? And we're just, we're even just looking to buy back ten minutes, fifteen minutes on some bus routes. So I think also holding some accountability to Dee to say like, why are, is, how often are your bus drivers turning over? Are they, like, maybe it's just my bus route for my particular kid I'm seeing it?
Oh, it takes one sub to wait five or ten minutes longer.
Yep.
And you can, you can see it in the data though, right? Like the routes themselves are, are not, like, the, we have the data that shows how long it takes to do the, the route itself.
Right. It's fairly consistent.
The other thing though to, to note is that we went from having, servicing both Abbott and NAB bus routes last year. We had twelve buses and we have nine right now doing that, those, you know, different routes, but s- same amount of kids. And I, I think just to note, that wasn't a directive from our committee when we were saying to Dee about, like, we weren't saying we cut buses. It was that we have, we have thirty-five routes. We don't want kids riding the bus, I think more than forty minutes kind of max is what we were hoping to achieve.
I think we said forty to forty-five.
Yeah, including that kind of stop.
Yeah.
And they, but they've, they're the ones who chose that number of, of the nine buses as opposed to cutting it from twelve. So that's also.
We asked, we asked them to combine the routes.
Yeah.
So we asked, we did ask them specifically to combine the routes, we asked them, we didn't ask them to combine Day and Miller because we knew that that would, that wasn't feasible. I think now, right, right now, we've already asked them to look at how they could separate the Ab and Abbott routes, which is something, Tom, you mentioned that I, I had shared. I wanna see that and I wanna see what that looks like before we would commit to that. And, but that's still, to me, I still, I'm just pushing, pushing back towards what the recommendation is, is to adjust the school start times. Because we knew that we might be doing that. We said, let's start this way and we knew that there'd be some flexibility with it. And I do understand, I think Lori, it's a great point, I know families have organized their, their day around it and five minutes can be a major, major deal. I'm just gonna go back on the fact that we said from the beginning that we would be looking at this. And so we knew that this flexibility might, so we just need people to work with us.
No, I think that. My point there was just giving them a couple of weeks to, time to adjust.
Time, yeah, 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 now, good point, good.
Suppose the other thing was, I was looking at that data specifically on the Abbott and NAB. And so I just took, for example, that September twenty-fourth date in the afternoon because that seems to be the, the, the time, the, the afternoon bus length time is, seems to be the issue there. I'm assuming when they say they're leaving Abbott at three o'clock, even though the bus says they've been there from two fifty-three, the kids aren't on the bus until like two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine or. the kids aren't on the bus until like two fifty-eight, two fifty-nine, or, you know, they're not loaded and sitting on the bus. So their journey time is starting at three and their last drop off time is three forty-one. So I was looking at those, the longest bus ride I saw for that was forty-seven minutes. So if we're cutting ten minutes off, the longest bus ride should in theory then reduce down to thirty-seven minutes.
That's for the afternoon. In the morning, we're looking at even potentially shortening that even more by adjusting.
The morning routes are shorter than the afternoon.
Right, but even even still the mornings, you, it looks, and I'm just looking at the Abbott and NAB tab. Like, those look like they can be shortened, again, one way or the other. Like, D could just say, you know what, we're dispatching five minutes later to start that.
Yes, to that point, that that again, that's kind of a, that could, it all also goes to what Valerie was saying, like, that is something we could do next week. Right? And I will say, to the other end, it's, we've, we've advertised when those stops are. The buses could just start coming later, that could happen at any time. I just don't think, I just think we want to communicate that to families because.
That's actually in the notes.
People, yeah, if people start, if people start assuming that the bus is just always late, that's not necessarily good either.
There was also one thing, and I don't know if you've spoken to the principal at NAB, that was kind of popping up was buses parking at NAB, pulling into NAB and parking on the road because they they were sitting and waiting for drop off.
They, that was something that the principal shared with me that that happened a few times. Right? Because of, again, the, they're waiting, they're getting to the school too early, too many buses are getting there, and so therefore that was, that was another piece of it.
So do they feel this time change will allow the buses to to be able to?
Yes, because they won't be sitting and waiting at NAB, they'll be able to roll in and drop off and keep moving. Similar to that same dynamic that we're talking about at WA, where they're actually able to keep moving.
They're getting there late enough that they're just unloading. It makes me like a little, yeah, what, to have so many different start times and end times at all of our different schools. Not to say that it's not necessarily a reason to do it, it just creates a lot of inconsistency. I don't know. It's like, I'm talking to my Christopher Lee mom and I'm like, oh, we got to be at school at this time, but they're at a different time than I am, and it's just something to consider too, is like how much variation we have across all six schools to have all different start and end times.
If we made the adjustment, it would be the same, right? Because Miller, right now, right now, Christopher Lee and Robinson are different. But Day, Miller, Abbott and NAB are all the same, and so if we made this adjustment, then the only school that would have a different start time would be Robinson. Because all three three to five schools would have the same start and end.
So it's actually going to make it better?
It would make it better. To your point.
So I guess what we need to consider is do we want to, do we want to change the school start times entirely? That's part A. And part B, do we want to change just bus schedule adjustments at the same time or at a different time? And or are we doing middle school and elementary at the same time? Is that kind of the, like, three decision points that we need to make over the next few weeks?
So I would argue that the pickup time is not even necessarily, I mean, you can certainly make that call and say, we would like you to do this, but D could do that tomorrow without us even approving it, right?
We just, I guess, are making a recommendation on whether we think we should communicate it versus just to Valerie's point, is it, on the elementary side, is it easier to move the bus times a little bit ahead of an actual start time change? Or is it easier to just do it at the same time?
I mean, I I defer to my privilege as a part-time, work-from-home parent. So I think more communication is probably more successful.
To that end, with this not having been put as a vote expected, do we have to hold it? Or, like, I don't know if there's a consensus of whether or not people are ready to take a position on the recommendation, the overall recommendation tonight? Or if we, if it would be better to hold it, just because if we were to take a position tonight, it's two more weeks that we can be hammering that messaging out.
I think the other side of it is, though, Tom, is to give families and community members time to give feedback, ask questions, clarify. Because I know I value getting that before making a vote. I know in numbers, it's kind of looking like this makes sense, but in practice.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that was.
Can we, can we touch a little bit too on on the ridership? One number that jumped out at me on the Abbott-NAB route is sixty-five kids on bus twenty-six? So we only have the ridership, and I know ridership fluctuates based on day of the week and kids' schedules and but we do, we do only have ridership for one day, whereas we have like all the time for three or four days. So I just wanted to see if we could follow up on that one.
I wonder if that's picking up a group at a certain neighborhood or certain development, because.
Yeah, I think it's the NAB.
Yeah, it is.
It was twenty-six.
It doesn't seem, I mean, it's a little, still a bit of a longer time rise route, but you would think that the number of students would significantly change the duration of the ride, but it seems to be in line with the other routes that are picking up twenty bus kids.
Sometimes like, though, and I, and I know a bus route change, a bus route number change would also need that leeway communication, but sometimes like those stops at the end of the route can be picked up by another bus that's could be switched to a different bus if they're, if it's helping lower that number of kids. I didn't, I didn't look as closely at.
That's the highest one.
What is the maximum number of students on a bus again?
I think it's supposed to be seventy-two, but that's three to a seat. And it depends on the.
To me, it also is like the the geographical area that those bus routes are picking up is significantly smaller than your.
Dense.
Yeah, yeah, so you would think that the, if they were configured in in the mo, I mean, I'm not a bus expert by any stretch of the imagination, right? But the, like, the coverage map is significantly smaller than when you have your Christopher Lee and your Miller kids and your Day kids that are like on opposite ends of the, so.
Would be an interesting, it is also the longest route there. It'd be interesting to look to see what would the impact be if if the schools were separated?
It's like, is it worth pushing back on D to look at those routes holistically again?
We are, and and I will say, that's another thing.
I want to rerun his routes from a.
We're, we've, we have been working and sharing concerns and talking with D about this. I think the other point, though, is that it's, there, there is also a limit as to what can be adjusted and what can be changed, so as as we're, as we're looking at it. But I think we can, we can continue, right now, one of the big things is to just say, separate these routes. Tell us what this looks like with the number of, with the number of buses that we have, and can you have, I think we looked at it where it looks like they should be able to have six buses that are supporting Abbott and four buses that would be supporting NAB, if that would work, and what would that do to those counts specifically?
And just, because you said, you you mentioned that that one was one of the longest ones, which, by the way, it's twenty-six up top, but I think it changes to thirty-two in the bottom dataset. You said how it was one of the longer ones, but it's because it's at Abbott at eight thirty-seven. Right, so it's, it's actually a short, it's, it's like a twenty a twenty-minute bus route.
Yeah, yeah, good point.
Sitting there for nine minutes. It's like sitting there for nine minutes.
And then the twenty-minute built-in buffer. So, yeah, those kids are on there for.
Can I just?
The only thing about separating the buses, sorry, Tom, just what I said that in my head, is that I think there's value in having elementary parents to be able to put all their elementary kids on the same bus at the same time. So I I think it's still worth looking at. Can we make the bus routes more efficient? But still helping.
Better markup, a better divvying of the routes, you know, spread out while still keeping families.
Yeah, like, if we're going to use, what what, what would adding a tenth bus to the combined routes look like as opposed to doing six and four?
You'd really want to look at how many of those kids are in limbo, right? How, of of the nine routes currently, how many of those kids are sitting, are are NAB kids sitting and waiting at Abbott, right? I think that's a big number that we'd want to figure out. That scenario, because what we're essentially doing in that scenario is we're splitting the students away, right? So we need to look at that subset of NAB kiddos.
That can change year to year, though, so you want to make, you want to figure out what makes sense just in general.
But the bus routes are somewhat reconfigured each year, or they can be, like, individual stops can be changed and whatnot, so. So I just wanted to make one clarifier, just because it came up last week, and I want to make sure I understand the information we got. The last meeting, we realized that we have so many, I don't remember the exact number of routes that we're using, right? But the contract we have is for one more than that. We are not getting billed for that right now. And I'm not saying that because I don't want to add the other for cost savings.
It came up, that's a good clarification, thank you. So, yes, so we, our contract is for thirty-five bus routes. We are using thirty-four, we are only getting billed for thirty-four.
So it's not, it's not, we're getting shorted as a district, it's.
But we're using thirty-four at the, in the middle and high school, not for elementary ones.
So the way that that has always worked has been whichever tier required the most amount of buses in order to make that work, that's, that's where your extreme is, right? And so that's where the thirty-five comes in. So our biggest tier is six through twelve. We need the most buses for six through twelve. We only need thirty-four. So this change in the elementary, that's where we have to look at that and say, okay, well, what does that really mean? And what, is there a bus that's available in order to do that? Or, you know, what is happening with those, with with the, with the routes that we're paying for?
I guess just to pull that thread, though, like, the route count between the K to five and the six to twelve is a difference of four buses. Because they're needed in the afternoon for the late runs, right? And then they don't, so they don't have a morning run.
I mean, I think D is having a a driver shortage. I mean, the other side of it is, is, and I know people have commented about the s, the athletes, the sports team buses in the afternoon. And that there's a struggle to get them, but Jeff Bunyan, the athletic director, has said, like, all the school districts are having. So we're also battling a a bus driver shortage and trying to work with D and do what we can.
I think it's a widespread problem. I've seen signs in other towns advertising bus drivers.
I think in summary, too, is just for anyone that's listening out there, is to understand that they're, the Dr. Chu and Courtney, they've been collecting a lot of actionable data. There's lots of data that's available to them and to us to view on start and end times, and that we are continuing to monitor them, that you're, you're being very proactive about it, because not, all this data is necessarily accessible to the generalized public, so I just want to make sure that they, if you're sitting there hearing that you're understanding that we're talking about very specific, like, huge amounts of dataset that we've all been looking over that is being very strategically analyzed and being tracked by both building principals and by D.
We've done double.
Yeah, so there's additional data this week than we had from our last meeting, where the school buildings started tracking some bus data just to compare against D. So I just wanted to make sure that that came abundantly clear to anyone that's listening, that we are really doing a due diligence and looking at the actual data and the numbers and when the buses are going in and out.
So I think before we kind of look at wrapping this up and potentially moving on to our next segment, is there anything else or any other data or any other information that you, as a committee member, would like to see before we vote at the next meeting? Okay. If you think of anything, email. Okay, thank you for that, Dr. Chu and Courtney. We will come back and review at a vote at our next school committee meeting on on that. Okay, moving on to our middle schools pathways policy. It's our first reading of their draft policy, and we're hoping to vote on it on November third. So to start this, I'm going to make a motion to waive the first reading of our new middle schools pathways policy. Do I have a second?
So move, uh, second.
Thanks, Bill. All in favor? Okay, so again, just to, I know I'd mentioned it at the last meeting, just to give everybody some background. The state, and Desi has directed that school districts who are members of a career and technical education school must have a policy that explicitly outlines how we promote essentially that as an option to our middle school students for looking at their high school career. And what Neshoba Tech very kindly did was they actually created a policy for their current member schools based on what our current practices are. And really just put it in formal, formalized writing, and so the policy committee met last week. And we reviewed it, we checked with Dr. Chu about Kurt, like, making sure that it follows along our current policy and procedures, I should say, and process. And that's what's in the packet tonight for you to review. Typically, what happens at the moment is our eighth graders get a presentation at the start of the year from Neshoba Tech. They come to the school. Anybody interested then in applying can then do a day visit facilitated by Blanchard and Stony Rook to Neshoba Tech. The guidance counselors are also there to support then students who have decided that they would like to apply to Neshoba. And they support them through that process. We also do give Neshoba Tech contact information for middle school families so that they can mail any information out to potential families who could, who would be interested. I'm trying to think, am I forgetting anything?
No, that's, that's, that is good. The, the, one of the things that I think is great about the policy, and it's about what the expectation from the state is, is that any transportation for students to participate in the field trips is on the host school. So that's good for us. I mean, that, like, you know, and Neshoba is great about doing that, they they budget for that, so they budget for being able to, they pay the cost for our students to come and visit them. The other thing, just for your context and for anybody who might be listening, is that if they're reading this bill in general, there's a whole other part to this bill that is on Neshoba's shoulders. Because as a technical school, they have to develop a whole new admissions policy. We don't have to do that, that's not for us. We're just this half of it. So, but the bill talks about both of those things, so if anybody was reading that, they might think, oh, well, we're not doing all of it. No, our responsibility is having middle schools that then can send students to Neshoba. We need to do the things that Catherine talked about, and what Neshoba did, Dr. Pigeon, who's the superintendent there, she did a really nice job kind of articulating what we've already been doing, which they've said and seen as a best practice. So they looked at what we've done, what our relationship has been with them, how we've already been collaborating and cooperating with them for a long time. Which I think is great, so that's what the policy basically reflects.
And I think the other thing just to note that we kind of just put in some language just to clarify was that we we have students in the district who aren't necessarily resident of Westford. And so those students don't necessarily have the can apply to necessarily to, well, Neshoba currently don't, that's right, yeah.
So what's, we, we, we support school choice here in Westford. Neshoba, their school committee has voted to not accept school choice. So that becomes. So that become, if they ever change that in the future, then
That can change, yeah.
Then students who came to us via school choice
Children's staff.
are from a different district, and that's why the policy outlines all of the towns that go to Neshoba. We also have, one of the things we'll talk about in the enrollment, it's later, is that we also have some staff members whose students we have in the district who might not live in any of those areas. So they don't necessarily have access to Neshoba Tech. But the spirit of the policy should be that our counselors will still help that individual figure out, we won't pay for them to go and visit the school. We're not gonna, that's, you know, because again, the o- the the support for transportation is always on the host. Um, but our counselors will certainly work with any student who wouldn't be in the umbrella of Neshoba to help them find where they're
Do they have access to another CT they have?
Yeah, because there's one, everybody has.
There's like Greater Lowell, there's, you know, yeah.
Everybody has one, so like, that's correct. Like, if they lived in Dunstable, they would be going to Greater Lowell. If they lived in Lowell, they'd be going to Greater Lowell. Um, if they lived in Lemonster, they'd actually be going to Lemonster. Because Lemonster has its own, um, CT. Um, we, our guidance counselors at the middle school level already do a great job helping the individual students. So that's just an important thing to remember, that we have some students who don't actually live within that Neshoba Valley Tech.
Yeah.
So, uh, and I apologize, I haven't read it word for word yet. That is just, it's something that we may want to make sure is covered.
It is.
I was just gonna say, do you see it in there?
Yeah. It was just to give you some context as to why it was there.
And and just for some context of, it's not, Neshoba Tech doesn't want to participate in school choice. It's, they have a waitlist, all right?
Yeah, no.
Yeah.
They, yeah, so.
So I I think the policy is great. I I like that it's sort of, um, I like the spirit behind it. And I think obviously it's state mandated, so great, let's do it. Um, the one question I had was, though, we got an email today from the state saying they were they were due November first.
Mm-hmm.
So if, are we planning to waive our process at the twenty?
We we can submit, we can submit our draft and tell them.
The state doesn't, the state actually hasn't, hasn't actually said that you have to approve a policy.
Oh, it can just be, okay.
We, as a school district, have to submit our practice and policy.
Oh, I see, okay.
So the fact that the superintendent's association said, you know what? It's just the best practice for your school committee to vote on this. But that's not what the law says. The law doesn't say that you have to vote on this policy. So we can still submit
The draft.
what the draft is on the November first timeline. And you can still have a thoughtful conversation about it. And if you wanted to change anything, we could amend that.
Okay, yeah, got it.
And so just to then remind people, seeing as it's our first policy of the year, we have a three-meeting, um, process that we follow. We do the first reading, um, tonight at our first meeting. Then the policy goes up for twelve school days for public comment, which you're able to do through our school committee website. Um, and then our second school committee meeting is where we just kind of have any sort of discussion, feedback, questions. And then at our third, um, school committee meeting, we would vote on the final, uh, policy. And so this policy would go up tomorrow for public comment from October seventh. It will stay up for twelve school days, bearing in mind we have two school closures in between then and now. So it would be up until October twenty-fourth for public comment. Um, and then we would vote on November third. And so that's it. So any questions, clarity, thoughts, feel free to, um, just send them through to myself, Laurie and Jess on policy subcommittee. And any potential amendments, we can do that for our next meeting. Okay? And on to our final, um, topic of this evening, our fall enrollment as of ten.
So in the packet, you'll see what our official October one numbers are. And, um, Desi requires us to submit those numbers. That's literal, that becomes our official enrollment for the year. Um, you'll see what those numbers are, the change from September. The overall net change was six students, so we've invited six new people to join us. It's actually a little bit more than that because we've had some people leave, but I didn't track what that actual number is. So I would say welcome to those six people, but it's a little bit more than that. One of the things I was looking at was the impact on those larger class sizes in the elementary schools. And fortunately, that hasn't changed that, they're still large. Um, but I mean, fortunately, they haven't gotten bigger. Um, they didn't decrease, but they they certainly haven't gotten bigger. But the the overall change, um, was not significant from September to October. The other thing we've included in the packet is that breakdown, again, of the school choice, the staff enrollment and, um, open enrollment numbers. One of the things that happened this year, which hasn't happened in the five years that I've done this, is, um, for at least one of the grades, we actually exhausted the waitlist. Um, you know, every year we have people who end up on, because we do a public lottery for the school choice. We do always end up with a waitlist because we have more people who want to come to Westford Public Schools than we have openings. And normally, every year, someone asks us, well, what are the chances? And we say, well, sometimes people don't accept it. Um, this was the first year that for for one of the grades, we we went through the entire list and, um, for for third grade, thank you, um, and finally found folks. And you, and this is after school started, too, because people had changed their mind. Sometimes it's a question of transportation, because they have to provide transportation. Um, another aspect is that sometimes if a family is entering multiple students into the lottery, one child might get in, but the others don't. And so they don't get that benefit of the sibling, um, priority that happens once you're actually in the lottery. And so sometimes that's just not feasible for a family to send one child and not and not the other. So there's a number of reasons why people would would not accept it. Um, but Kathy did a great job just continuing, reaching out to people and letting them know. Some people were like, wait, the school's already started. And then they still thought about it, and then they would think about, okay, well, what what does that mean? Um, but so we have eighty-five, that's the number that we had looked at. Open enrollment, again, just for all of your, for so that you all remember, open enrollment is for is students who who live in Westford, who are requesting for a variety of reasons to go to a different districted school. So it really only impacts K through eight. Because
Yeah.
everybody goes to the academy if they're living in town and going to our school. But in middle, so sometimes what will happen is someone will ask if they can go to a different elementary school. The most typical thing that happens is that a family moves in town during the school year or during their experience and requests that their child stay
With their cohort.
with their cohort. And so we ask them to apply for open enrollment. And so sometimes they'll, you know, they'll move in second grade and they'll want to stay, well, they'll move in first grade and they'll want to stay in the K to two school for second grade. So they'll apply for open enrollment. Then sometimes they'll even want to stay with that same cohort that for the three to five school. Sometimes they don't. We remind them that they have to kind of always revisit that and that transportation is their responsibility. But it's just important for you, when you look at that number of thirty-five, that's still residents.
That, does that number include, where do, or how do we count? Because, for example, we have the sale program now of Blanchard's.
Same question.
That is not open enrollment. That would not, that does not include students.
We don't count that number, yeah.
If a student is enrolled to attend a specific program, that's not included in this.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
And then we have twenty-five staff members in the district whose students are are in our schools who have not been, um, accepted in the school choice lottery. Of those eighty-five, a a number of them are our school, are are staff members' kids as well, too. Because we've been trying to win its appropriate and when there's an opening at that grade level, we enter them into the lottery. If we pull, it's a public thing, we do it with a fishbowl. We have multiple people checking the numbers, people come and watch us. It's it's like the NFL draft, if that was anything I ever paid attention to. Um, it's not nearly that exciting, but, uh, but it's, yeah, so, um, so sometimes we will, um, pull staff members or staff, children of staff members.
Six seniors.
I was thinking the same thing.
That's a remarkable number in the last year of, you know, what is typically the last year of formal schooling, six seniors.
Well, that's actually a low number. Last year, last year, the vast majority of our school choice openings came from senior class.
Yeah.
I mean, it always ends up happening in, but last year we had a lot of, we, that was just a large group of
Yeah.
school choice.
So just on the open enrollment and or the staff, uh, for those schools that are experiencing really large class sizes, those would possibly be, those are probably shifted into a different school at that point because of that.
So when we, when we, when we identify where the school slot, where the school choice slot will be, it's always at the schools that have the lowest numbers that then could absorb that. And in many cases, we're actually trying to keep a certain amount of equity, right? So sometimes we have, we'll we'll have a situation where any given year, based on the population in that districted area, all of a sudden, there might be a really small second grade class. And so we'll open up some slots there because it's actually when the class sizes get too small, sometimes that actually can also be negative.
But do we have that same discretion or or autonomy, I guess, on the open enrollment and the staff? Like, if, do we say, like, okay, well, we will let your
Yes, yes.
Have we said no to open enrollments?
Yes.
Likewise, when the staff student comes, are we saying this is a school you have bought at?
Yes, that's exactly what we do. Actually, we we will get, the 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 nature of open enrollment is that people are requesting a very specific thing.
Yeah.
But each year, we might have to say no.
Yeah.
Um.
Because they have a, they have a seat at their neighborhood school.
That's right. And so that's the conversation that we have, is that in order to do that, then it could impact the class sizes because, um, so.
Even if your request is Robinson, grade one, sorry.
That's right. And and the same has has happened with staffs. In the contract, if we had to increase our staff, we can say no. If it's going to impact our staffing overall. Um, and we'll have, we have people who make requests and they will share where their hope would be. And then we will always say, well, this is where the opening is. And sometimes we have staff members who say no, that actually becomes more problematic for travel and stuff like that, um, so.
Okay, cool.
Maybe we'll get lucky and someone will, like, wanna go somewhere where there's lower numbers and come out of some of those higher classroom numbers. I don't want to move into that Christopher Lee huge classroom, I want to stay in my smaller classroom here. And then those make easy choices.
And on that note, I think this was actually a good evening to to discuss this because actually, just to remind us all that we have our school tours coming up this week.
Oh, yes.
We're gonna see that. We're gonna see this in action. Um, we'll, we're doing tours at Robinson Day, Abbott, and the Westford Academy roof.
Where will we start?
Whether on Thursday. Here.
Here.
Uh, let me see, actually, I I will, I'll verify that. My, what I, I sent an email to the principals with the suggestion that we start here and then, wait.
Are you taking the van?
Do you want to drive the van?
That'd be great.
We could take, we could all take, we have to check if it's available. Let's actually do that, let's check to see if it's available, because it's actually a pretty good idea.
Yeah.
And Courtney has driven it and she's very good at it.
Oh, I love her.
So let's see what's available. Um, I, yeah, we're gonna start here and go to Abbott first at nine o'clock. And then I believe my suggestion to the principals was that then we would go to Day, then Robinson, then WA in the morning, if we still have time.
Yeah.
Um, but if we go to WA, we're not going to the roof in the morning. If we go to WA in the morning, we're gonna go and we're gonna look at some class sizes.
Oh, so we're not doing the roof? I thought we were doing.
In the morning, if we can.
Oh, if we can, okay.
The the
Yeah.
the solo roof tour is Thursday afternoon, four o'clock.
Yeah.
We can, we can get on the roof if that's, it's it's flexible.
So if we're really interested in the roof, we should prioritize the Thursday at four?
You could just come along if you don't, if you can do both. Because I think when we spoke about it at first, we, when we talked about WA, it was just the roof.
It was just the roof.
It wasn't looking at class size, yeah.
I mean, truth be told, if any of you want to just go on the roof at any time.
He just wants to make me climb up on another roof.
I, I want to get on a roof.
If Jeff's not available to still go on the roof at at on Wednesday or Thursday morning, Jeff's joining us Wednesday and Thursday morning as well, too, so we'll go to the roof if you want to go there.
I
We're tailoring it to
I have an eye on an annual town meeting article asking for money. And I think it behooves us to make as, to have as many eyes on there as possible.
Yeah.
I have a prep block to finish my day on Thursday, so I will be here promptly at four.
Yeah, so, yeah, the Thursday afternoon is definitely the the roof.
Yeah, important.
Um, the hope is Wednesday and Thursday mornings, we're also doing the roof as well.
Yep, we can do that.
Yeah.
Do we have an approximate timeline, just so I can make sure I keep my work?
We're kind of saying nine to eleven.
We were saying nine to eleven, and within that window, I would, as the fast, as 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 much as we can move with a purpose, move with a purpose, then, um,
Ask the questions later.
then we're gonna be, that's what I said.
Questions are for the bus rides.
Somebody who has been on tours with us before that haven't moved with a purpose.
No, that was my whole thing, whenever I took students to, well, way back in the day when I was a principal, we would go on field trips. Yes, folks, I did go on field trips. Um, we would, uh, I was always telling students, okay, let's move with a purpose, we're walking with a purpose. We're moving with a purpose.
I tell my kids to show some urgency.
Okay, that's that's urgent.
And I think we don't have to see, you know, we've done school building tours before where we've seen a lot.
Yeah.
I think we're going to these schools with a very specific purpose in mind. So, um, you know, it's just giving us eyes on a classroom or two as opposed to
We're gonna, we're gonna start here.
Too much of that's actually, things that are actually happening.
We'll start here at Abbott.
Yeah.
I did ask the principals, I gave them a a loose timeline and said, if that, if the classrooms that we were gonna be looking at aren't in those classrooms at that time, let me know, because we'll shift it.
Yeah.
But if, I think if we have that window, we're moving around. If if the van's available and Courtney's driving, then
We'll be there. Awesome.
It'll be good.
It'll be very efficient.
Yeah.
Uh, sorry, to just to circle us back to the enrollment, I just wanted to say that, um, in case you're aware of the other conversations happening in town with like the planning board, for instance, with large, um, developments through the MBTA Communities Act. Um, and obviously as part of the Robinson School Project, I'm feeling a very, like, a a need to really understand and track us against our, so if you remember, we previously had two sets of projections. We had the MSBA set of projections from our earlier steps of the MSBA process. And NESDEC also did enrollment projections. So I'm actually gonna sit down with Kathy and look at how are we tracking according with the projections, actuals versus projections, um, just so we can really have a good understanding of that. Um, because I think as we get started on the Robinson Project, we're gonna get that question a lot of, how can you plan for, I think, projects that haven't or haven't happened yet, have or haven't happened yet?
Well, and also the fact that that entire district, the entire, um, I'm a, sorry.
Is within Robinson.
It's all within one, our districts. Yeah, the overlay district is within one of our school districts right now.
Just keeping an eye on it.
Directing back.
And just enrollment trends, too. You know, like, in the future, where, I mean, you know, you look at the script and it's, you know, you see the some of the numbers and how we decide, master planning.
For me, it's it's really interesting to think about, once we have a projection, how do we match our actuals to it? Because so much of the eligibility period and the feasibility study are like built on these ten-year MSBA projections. So, you know, each year that kind of ticks by, it's like another data point to say, are they any good? You know, how how good are they at at tracking us? Um, I noticed that both MSBA and NESDEC under, overestimated our kindergarten numbers, our actual K registration.
For this year.
Yes.
Is lower.
Was low by like thirty to forty kids.
That that might actually be good in the long run right now for us, for right now, because those ten-year projections, I'm sure, did not take into account this overlay district idea.
Right, right, there, well, it's like
So, you know, that
Mentioned, but they can't like count on it until
We also just have some of those new big developments, like that Wendell Place off of Nutting. There's no way that that does not bring in
Some.
ten fifty, I mean, those houses are definitely built for larger families, right? So I think we should be expecting, I don't know when they actually start to sell and people are gonna start moving in, but um, more so than necessarily the, you know, one-bedroom apartment complexes is if you put in fifteen houses in a development that are four-bedroom houses, you've got to expect you're getting two to three kids per house in those areas.
But we also know at some point in the future is a conversation around, like, redistricting, reconfiguring as well.
Yeah.
Right.
Rebalancing.
Right.
And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Awesome. Good night. Thank you.